Testing one, two, three. This will be the November 19, 2014 City Council Special Meeting, followed by the regular meeting.
Testing one, two, three, one, two, three, test, test.
Satellite Beach, November 19, 2014, approximately 6:45. This is to discuss and take action on Resolution Number 954. Jim?
Resolution Number 954, Resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, accepting the results of the November 4, 2014 election, city election.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution 954.
Second. And motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Breimer. Any further discussion from council? Open up for public. Any public comment? Hearing none. Bring it back to council. Council?
Um, Lennar?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Medina?
You'll have to wait.
It's ordinance number 954. It's based on the results of-
Resolution.
Resolution.
Oh, yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes, motion carries. Any further business on the special meeting? Hearing none. We're adjourned until 7 o'clock for our regular meeting. Good evening. I'd like to call the order, a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, November 19, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Will you please stand and join councilwoman Dean in a moment of silence and a pledge?
A moment of silence, please. Amen and a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I open up for pub, citizens' comments, and this is for non-agenda items. So for citizens' comments on non-agenda items.
Good evening, gay pride citizen. I just want to thank council and staff for these new hearing aids. They are tremendous. I had the opportunity to check them out. I can hear everybody perfectly. You can turn and talk to your fellow councilpeople. I can hear you perfectly. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Floor's still open for public comment. Hearing none. Bring it back to council. Moving on to Agenda Item 4. I'd like to open up a public hearing on ordinance number 1099. Jim?
Ordinance number 1099, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending appropriations of funds for fiscal year 2013-2014 budget ordinance number 1077. Set ordinance as previously amended by ordinance number 1091, providing an effective date. It's a second reading of ordinance number 1099.
Move to adopt ordinance 1099 on second reading.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Breimer, to adopt ordinance number 1099 on second reading. Further council discussions? Hearing none. Open up for public discussion on Agenda Item 4. Hearing none. Bring it back to council. Lennar?
Councilman Medina? Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, adoption of minutes for November 5, 2014, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 5 meeting as submitted.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer, to adopt the minutes. Discussion? Hearing none. Lennar?
Councilman Medina? Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, comments by councilwoman Dean. Cheryl?
Uh, well, you know, I'm not one usually to write down, uh, comments or come up with speeches, but I had to do it this time. I would like to thank the citizens for electing me in 2011. It has been an honor serving as a volunteer council member the last three years. Thank you to my campaign team, many of who are here, who ran a campaign with the utmost integrity. There was laughter and a little bit of wine at all of our meetings. We found great humor and laughed continually throughout the election as we encountered Satellite Beach campaign shenanigans such as sign stealing, negative false anonymous letters, photo taping, "creeping" as we called it, and harassing phone calls of local businesses that supported me from opponents, some with accomplishments driven by the community the last three years, to include expansion of the library football field to keep the South Beach Seahawks in Satellite Beach. It was a great endeavor, and I know they're very happy to be back in, back at the library field. It's a very community-oriented day when they do play in Satellite Beach, and if you ever get a chance to attend a football day, please do that. Decorative paved crosswalks along Cassia in the CRA, support of the efficiency panel and study, which a lot of things have come out of that study that have now been implemented, the lean release of satellite arms property in order to encourage upgrades of the apartment complex, which had become an eyesore and a health hazard, some minor special events which are now happening in the city, the reduction of the Avalarm tax rate the first year I was in office, and no increases in any assessments my first year in office, and the budgeting of $145,000, $49,000 to replenish the reserves that have been dwindling for many years. That was also done my first year in office. All of the above were done without the use of CRA monies to supplement operating expenses and/or foregoing CRA projects so monies could be put back into the dwindling reserves. CRA monies were also put into a sinking fund to pay down the CRA debt service. There was full membership to appointed boards when I was first elected to city council. At last count, we had 14 vacancies, which is kind of sad. The CRA fund transfers to pay for general operating expenses of the CRA in violation of Florida Statute 163 were halted my first year in office and in fiscal year 12 and 13. And then, of course, I encouraged transparency and accessibility to media, meeting, audios, minutes, et cetera, which are now readily available on the city's webpage. We also created an audit committee, which unfortunately was immediately disbanded and then recreated because it is required by law, and then vetting of the updates of the redevelopment plan through the community, a plan which should have been updated every five years or so. Unfortunately, the current council discarded the community vetting process when they recently adopted the updated plan. And there were some community-driven issues which did not happen. Unfortunately, no banner of shade trees in the form of mature vegetation or lighting was installed along Cassia Boulevard, no landscaping of shade trees along Jackson, and a partnership recreated with the school board to provide a walkable community or walkable area along Jackson. Limited use of golf carts was also rejected. There was no community policing program, although this was a goal, the city council goal in 2012, but was never addressed by the administration. And of course, there's been no updated or upgraded personnel policy or creation of an internal affairs process, which has been an issue or something that I've encouraged since I've been on city council. There's really been no change in the business unfriendly reputation of the city, and we're now seeing non-commercial uses such as man caves, primitive and commercial zoning, which does not sustain the residential and/or bring in any sales tax. And I didn't, we did not see any reorganization of the community redevelopment department, planning and zoning, or support services to that department, which is hugely important when we have a lot of vacant property. Instead, we have support monies coming from the CRA to support existing staff, such as the building official, the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the finance department with no additional personnel. And one of the biggest things is that we've seen no community redevelopment projects, bricks and mortar projects, other than the crosswalks on Cassia since early 2012, even though those improvements such as three beach access crosswalks were approved to go out for bid for construction in 2012. So that's a little, that's kind of sad on behalf of the community. Looking back, my decision not to seek reelection was a family decision. Just the transition of our two children, who are here in the audience, are entering into high school. One is a freshman, and one is going to become a freshman next year. And due to my husband's work schedule, my time is better served for the next two years while they're making this transition into high school. In closing, I can tell you, since the day I moved into Satellite Beach 15 years ago with a newborn, Damon, who's somewhere, and Danny, who is, was one at the time, who's now 15, I've been surrounded by what we consider a second family, many of whom are in this audience. The citizens we know and the citizens that supported me during my campaign and throughout my three-year term are wonderful, caring, community-oriented people. My family and I are blessed to have served the fine people of the community, and Ben, my family, and I thank all of you. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
And you're all welcome back to my house for dinner. And Mr. Osmer, you have little boots to fill up here, and I kept your seat warm. Congratulations.
Okay, moving, thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 7, the transition. Steve?
She didn't tell you, be careful what you wish for. Please wave right hand. We're good after me.
Cheryl!
Okay. Ready?
Yes.
I, Steve Osmer, do solemnly swear-
I, Steve Osmer, do solemnly swear-
-that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support-
And uphold-
And uphold the Constitution of the United States-
And the state of Florida-
And the state of Florida-
As well as the City of Satellite Beach Charter-
As well as the City of Satellite Beach Charter-
City Codes and City ordinances-
City Codes and City ordinances-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
That I will well and faithfully discharge-
The duties-
The duties-
Of the office of Satellite Beach City Councilmember-
The duties of Satellite Beach City Councilmember-
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Congratulations and-
Thank you.
And Mr. Osmer, you have little boots to fill up here, and I kept your seat warm. Congratulations.
Okay, moving, thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 7, the transition. Steve?
She didn't tell you, be careful what you wish for. Please wave right hand. We're good after me.
Cheryl!
Okay. Ready?
Yes.
I, Steve Osmer, do solemnly swear-
I, Steve Osmer, do solemnly swear-
-that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support and uphold the Constitution-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And the state of Florida-
And the state of Florida-
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter-
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter-
City Codes and City ordinances-
City Codes and City ordinances-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
That I will well and faithfully discharge-
The duties-
The duties-
Of the office of Satellite Beach City Councilmember-
Of the office of Satellite Beach City Councilmember-
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
For jive.
Okay, moving on to Part C of number 7, comments from the newly elected members. I'm going to pull Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to say, I really appreciate this opportunity to come up here. It's a fine community that we live in. I love Satellite Beach. I like taking part in everything that we do here, and so I hope I represent the citizens well. I encourage them to tell me their thoughts, and I will do my best to uphold what we stand for up here. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thanks.
I've been here before. I'm back again, and I have to tell you, I look out in the audience and I see people like David Scheck there, I see Jeff Leese back there. You know, I've had the honor of serving with a lot of different people on council, and I've watched David through his years as mayor and as a councilman. I watched Lorraine from the audience when she was on council, and I served with Frank, I served with Mark. I'm looking forward to serving with Steve. We've had great leadership over the years in Satellite Beach, and you know, the vision that was created for our city was created by people long before I got here. And the things that we do have been positive things. We're trying to be a community that's transparent. We are transparent. We're going to be more transparent. That's one of the things that is something that I'm going to be looking at over the next four years that I'm here. I want all of the residents of our city to know what's going on. We've done a good job in the A1A corridor, improvements for 2016 is a prime example of how we are going to do that. We reached out to all the community. We sent letters to them to let them know what was going on on A1A. You know, we have different things that are going to be happening in our city. We look at the A1A, or the property up there on, that was north of Publix, the 100 acres up there. There's going to be things that are going to be happening on that property, hopefully in the future, and we want the public engaged on that also, to come up with some of the things that we're going to be looking at for that parcel. So I'm open to any suggestions. Please call me if you have any issues, and I look forward to working with Steve and the rest of the council on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic. Thank you, Steve. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 8, city council comments.
A lot of feedback.
Can you hear that?
Well, you did that, let me get Mark to-
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, yes. Just wanted to welcome Steve. Glad you're here with us, and you had a very difficult election, I know. You made- But that's the best time you had. But congratulations. I mean, obviously, the public was very behind you being here, and we're just glad to have you a part of our team. Dominic, thank you again for your willingness to step up and be a part of this. You and I worked together, as you said, for many years, and it's really nice to have you here again. The only other comment I have, Mr. Mayor, is that I did attend the Holmes Regional Medical Center medical staff meeting today for the Families' Practice and General Practice section just to talk a little bit about fall prevention. I was invited to come speak to them. Just kind of updated them a little bit on some of the efforts that they can participate in in fall prevention, and good feedback from the meeting, and we'll continue on with that. And that's all I have, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, try it again. I want to-
Move the microphone.
I want to thank, I mean, I want to congratulate Dominic and Steve, and welcome Steve to our council. I look forward to working with you. And I just want to make the comment that even though the departing councilwoman is now gone, that does not absolve the council of responsibility to correct false statements made about the city, and I, there were so many inaccurate statements made about the city in her last comments, that you, it's not possible to enumerate them all, but suffice it to say that they were her perception of things going on in the city. I attended the planning and zoning advisory board meeting, and I want the council to know that, I think that's a very strong board now, and we can't say that about all of our boards. We've got a chair that knows how to run a meeting, which is key, and so I thanked them on behalf of the council for their service, and told them I hope they would stay around for a while.
Thank you. You want to talk with that?
Sure. I'll tell you what I did for the last two weeks. On the 10th of November, I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting, and on the 13th and the 14th, the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference was over in Orlando. I sit on the Urban Administration Policy Committee, and I also serve on the Legislative Committee for the League of Cities, which is the committee that takes all of the recommendations from the five policy committees and actually approves the two items from each one of the committees that are going to be the priorities for the Florida League of Cities in the legislative session coming up in 2015. So it was a pretty good, it was probably by far the best legislative conference I've been to in a number of years. So that was, that worked out pretty good. For those of you who don't know, Art Jonas, a longtime volunteer in our city, passed away last week, and Art was involved in so many different things over the years he lived here, and Art lived in our city from the 1960s. I think they moved here in 1958, and he was a longtime volunteer, and he's going to be solely missed. He lived on my street, and he has a lot of history with our city. He was instrumental in sidewalks through Satellite Beach and connectability for our schools. He was instrumental in the initial things that went on in Sampson's Island and a lot of other projects, so he'll be missed. And yesterday, I attended the swearing-in of our new county commissioners with our city manager Courtney and the mayor Frank here, and that was actually pretty good, too. So that's all I have.
Frank, thank you. I'll be quick. I attended the Space Coast League of Cities also, and the Florida League of Cities. Florida League was very interesting. Sea level came up quite a few times and is really on people's minds right now in the government. They're really looking for cities to step up and do plans and participate in the process. So it was one thing that was just not our city that's doing this, but most of the cities on the coast now and government agencies are doing this. So I'm glad we're a little bit ahead of the curve. Space Coast League of Cities, I haven't been a big fan of the recent couple of years, but I think we're really on the right track. We have some new people taking over that, and I think we'll have some issues brought to the executive board there to start making a difference on stormwater and some other issues. And I know Dominic, you're the treasurer this coming year, and I think it'll be a good board this year. That's all I have. Any other comments from council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick.
Thank you.
I'm getting quite a bit of questions on our farmer's market. We normally only allow things that come out of the ground to be sold at the farmer's market, but however, during this time between, well, up until December 18, we are having a holiday bazaar, so that has more gift-related items, and that's out at the farmer's market now. So if you get any questions, you know, that we're just offering that at this point in time until December 18. I did want to just update you, it's not in my report, written report, but we are, the citizens will be receiving a notice to be invited to take our online survey for the Community Resiliency Project. So that survey instrument has been finalized, and we're creating the notices now to be placed on the web, and then we'll be mailing one to each resident of the city, as well as business owners. Every address will get a notice. We also will have the booth at the Ocean Reef Beach Festival for people to come in and take the survey as well. We have received another thank you letter for our fire and police departments, and as you can tell, this is a regular occurrence. And we also get many thank you letters for the recreation and public works departments, but our police and fire departments, again, received one regarding a citizen who is very grateful to their, to them for their professionalism and helping him with an issue. We have taken in a very important step towards our P4 initiative, and I have attached the information to my report for you. The first initiative that has actually been finalized, the P4 initiative, has been us in Patrick Air Force Base with our recreation programs. The good thing for our citizens, since our recreation programs are pretty much open to anyone, they're opening up their programs, aftercare programs, to our community, and what the idea is that they, our community will be paying a fee, which would assist them in keeping their program, because they're, I mean, you could tell for Patrick, there's a lot less families there now than there used to be. We are still working through the stormwater idea with them, and that idea is, has to do with the soccer field that's at the south housing area that's currently underutilized and really not maintained very well. They would like us to take maintenance of that field over, but our request is that we be able to use a portion of that for stormwater purposes, so we're still working through that. We are holding a meeting with Patrick Air Force Base and the Economic Development Commission on February 12 at our Pelican Beach Clubhouse to kind of celebrate the first steps towards some of these actions. I have two action items, actually, this meet, this time. I have one in my report, which is requesting approval for vacation from March 11, 2015 through March 25, 2015. I know it's very early, but we're scheduling flights, and since I'll be out of state, Andy Stewart will be acting city manager during my absence, so I'd like approval for that.
Have a motion for that?
I don't, I don't think we need-
Well, if it's an action item-
I don't, I just think that we can give concurrence on that. You don't need a motion on that.
I need to open up for public comment also because it is an action item. So we can go concurrence, it's fine?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. I'll open up any public comment on this action item. Hearing none, thank you.
You are taking Sam with you, right?
You know, I'm debating that.
And we got Andy? We got Andy, yeah.
Yes, you got Andy for that period of time. I think the department heads are already lining up their requests.
Okay.
The second item that I have is, we, you might like this, because we are requesting to cancel the December 17 meeting since we have a lack of agenda items, and you kind of need a Christmas break, we think. So if you would like to do that, we would recommend that. We can sustain that without, we can have, we don't have a lot coming to you, so we can cancel that meeting if you'd like.
That's fine. Concurrent.
Concurrent.
Okay. Yeah, great. Public comment on that action item? Hearing none, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. I got a question up for you. On this survey that we're doing, I remember in our first public hearing, we had a lot of people there, a lot of people I didn't know, which doesn't really mean anything, but if you're a non-resident in Satellite Beach, we're trying to get information really from our residents on what they want to see in these areas. How is that going to be distinguished on taking this survey? Do they have, in order to take the survey, do you have to put where you live, and they will be-
We will be only, we will be basically limiting the amount of surveys that will come from each computer, and then you're required to put your home, or your business or home address in, or property address into the system. So if we get numerous surveys from the same address, then of course, they will work to backcheck that and call the property owner and find out what happened, and you know. So we will be making sure, as much as we can, of course, that that survey is being filled out by residents of the city. If there's an address that's outside of the city, we won't accept that survey.
Okay, thank you.
Courtney, back to the soccer field. Can you kind of define what they mean by maintenance?
They would like us to take over the maintenance of the field and basically run, you know, our recreation programs there. You know, the leagues would be able to use it. It's a lighted field, so there's an opportunity there.
Well, that's my question. Those lights, on a good day, are not very good.
Yeah.
They're really, and they're, I don't know how safe they are, so that's a liability we just got to take a look at, because you know, light in a field like that, I don't know, it used to be, what, a hundred grand to put up lights, something like that. I just caution-
It's about 150 now.
It's 150, but that's my concern, is with, you know, here's your field, but now it needs new lights, that kind of thing, so.
Well, that's the things that we would have to present to you, is those costs and benefits. You know, the advantage to us would be land for stormwater purposes, and to be able to do a pond, which is less, cheaper construction for us, and we're trying to work through the engineering of that to see if it's beneficial. If it's not beneficial to us from a stormwater perspective, then we wouldn't be interested in maintaining that field.
Okay.
Because we really don't have a need for the field. We really just are interested in the stormwater, you know, aspect of it.
We talked concerning that the other day, you and I, and drove around and-
Speak up.
I'm sorry. Okay. Courtney and I talked the other day on stormwater and joining with Patrick on this recreation facilities. I talked to Carrie a little bit today also concerning the piece of property on De Soto, where we are in desperate need of an area to hold stormwater there. So are we going to look at this as the whole picture when we do this?
That's one of the options that we're researching right now, because to put stormwater at the south housing area isn't very advantageous from a stormwater perspective, because that area is already treated, because of the south housing area, it's newly built. However, we don't have a lot of stormwater in the rest of the city that's built, you know, in the 60s. So the idea that we're-
The department heads are already lining up their requests.
Okay.
The second item that I have is we, you might like this, because we are requesting to cancel the December 17th meeting since we have a lack of agenda items, and you kind of need a Christmas break, we think. So if you would like to do that, we would recommend that. We can sustain that, without, we can have, we don't have a lot coming to you, so we can cancel that meeting if you'd like.
That's fine. Concurrent.
Concur.
Okay.
Agreed.
Public comment on that action item? Hearing the Speaker. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. I got a question up for you. On this survey that we're doing, I remember in our first public hearing, we had a lot of people there, a lot of people I didn't know, which doesn't really mean anything, but if you're a non-resident in Satellite Beach, we're trying to get information really from our residents on what they want to see in these areas. How is that going to be distinguished on taking this survey? Do they have, in order to take the survey, do you have to put where you live? And they will be.
We will be only, we will be basically limiting the amount of surveys that will come from each computer, and then you're required to put your home or your business or home address in or property address into the system. So if we get numerous surveys from the same address, then of course, we'll work to backcheck that and call the property owner and find out what happened and, you know. So we will be making sure, as much as we can, of course, that that survey is being filled out by residents of the city. If there's an address that's outside of the city, we won't accept that survey.
Thank you.
Back to the soccer field. Can you kind of define what they mean by maintenance?
They would like us to take over the maintenance of the field and basically run, you know, our recreation programs there. You know, the leagues would be able to use it. It's a lighted field, so there's an opportunity there.
Well, that's my question. Those lights, on a good day, are not very good.
Yeah.
They're really, and they're, I don't know how safe they are, so that's a liability we just got to take a look at, because, you know, lighting a field like that, I don't know, it used to be, what, a hundred grand to put up lights, something like that. I just caution.
It's about 150 now.
It's 150, but that's my concern, is where the, you know, here's your field, but now it needs new lights, that kind of thing, so.
Well, that's the things that we would have to present to you, is those costs and benefits. You know, the advantage to us would be land for stormwater purposes, and to be able to do a pond, which is less, cheaper construction for us, and we're trying to work through the engineering of that to see if it's beneficial. If it's not beneficial to us from a stormwater perspective, then we wouldn't be interested in maintaining that field.
Okay.
Because we really don't have a need for the field. We really just are interested in the stormwater, you know, aspect of it.
We talked concerning that the other day, you and I, and drove around and.
Speak up.
I'm sorry. Okay. Courtney and I talked the other day on stormwater and joining with Patrick on this recreation facilities. I talked to Carrie a little bit today also concerning the piece of property on DeSoto, where we are in desperate need of an area to hold stormwater there. So are we going to look at this as the whole picture when we do this?
That's one of the options that we're researching right now, because to put stormwater at the south housing area isn't very advantageous from a stormwater perspective, because that area is already treated, because of the south housing area is newly built. However, we don't have a lot of stormwater in the rest of the city that's built, you know, in the 60s. So the idea that we're looking at now is maybe moving one of the practice fields from the DeSoto fields over to the south housing area, and then using that as a stormwater area. So we're looking at the engineering for that now. If it works from an engineering perspective, then obviously, there's a lot other things that we have to look into. There's a lot of improvements that need to be made to the south housing fields, and for example, restroom facilities would probably be one that we would be interested in putting in. The parking lot needs to be resurfaced, and, you know, I mean, it needs a lot of work.
I know there's fields there that are no longer in use, that were at one time, baseball fields, the fences there, and in one particular one that sits behind the church and the commissary, if you look at those lights, there's 150,000 dollar lights that are not lighting up a ball field, and they look absolutely brand-new. So if that type of field could be turned into a little cross or soccer or a game, some field that we lose at DeSoto, it might be, you know, something to look into.
Right. And we've floated that suggestion out as to start, for them to consolidate some of the recreation facilities they have out there. They have a lot of recreation facilities that are not used at all out there, that they may, they have that opportunity to consolidate those and then, you know, consolidate the development sites out there as well. So those are all things that we're talking to them about. It's just that everything in the air force moves at an iceberg pace, so it's, you know, it's just, it's going to take a long time to work through those issues.
Thank you. Any further?
Yeah, I just, you know, when we look at this, you know, the stormwater aspect of what we need to do to address some of the issues that we're going to have in the future, you know, there's that brand-new stadium, that brand-new field they just put up there that's adjacent to Satellite High School. I mean, you know, when we weigh all this stuff out, I think we have to look at the dollars that we would have to spend with stormwater upgrades, you know, these other lighting issues and transferring fields, they could be just minute costs compared to what the stormwater issue costs are going to be for us. So, you know, if we can transition land in a way where we can utilize it in the south or in the central part of the city, you know, we have to really look hard at those, and I know the engineering is important, but those are going to be huge costs for us going down the pipe.
Part of the idea is to limit the amount of land we're taking off the tax rolls for stormwater, so that was the reason why we started looking into these fields as a possibility for that use.
Right. And there's even fields that are back behind here that eventually we may have to look at. If we're looking at pushing more stuff up that way, these are areas that would accommodate stormwater that's coming from the center part of the city also, so.
I think it's a good move. Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Agendas for our next meeting. Steve, normally at this meeting, we pick boards we're going to be on, and if you would, take a look at all the boards out there and see something you'd like to be on, and I know some of you want to stay on the same boards because of retirement or something, you're on another committee, so that's what we'll do next meeting.
If you all want to submit your interests to me, that would help us, and I can maybe create that list for you before your meeting, so you don't have to have a 20-minute discussion.
I'm open for it.
If you'd like to do that.
Great, well, thank you. And these are the items for the next December 3 meeting. We're not having the one on the 17th, so if you need any other items added, please see Courtney or myself.
In that meeting, I will be out of town.
On the 3rd?
On the 3rd, I've got a meeting in St. Petersburg, get a pension trust fund the next morning.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other items up for the agenda? Hearing the Speaker. And at this time, any further business before council?
Yes, sir.
All right. Everybody, thank you very much for attending. This meeting is adjourned.